Calling to order the regular planning commission meeting for Tuesday, June seventeen, two thousand and twenty five. At this time, we'd like a roll call, please.
Chair Tides Amora.
Here.
Vice Chair Sid Alterman is abstaining due to a conflict with items three point one and three point three. So we have our alternate in place Armando Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner John Dynan.
Here.
Commissioner Joan Stewart.
Here.
And Commissioner Natasha Bosso.
Here.
And our other alternate Ben Rubin is absent.
Okay, any planning commissioner member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled data item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Instead is made that statement here already. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. And time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, please state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the planning commission members. So we'll open up to public comments.
Hello, yeah, okay, now it is. Hi there, my name's Fred Walton. I live in Modesto, Northern Modesto on Hoag Road. And my concern is the Riverwalk project. I've contemplated this for quite a while and I know you'll be part of the recommendation to the planning or to the council. And I just feel that the nature of river bottoms aren't best to be built on. Due to all the flooding and the sewer and the the grand farmland that's there. But if if you are in debate on that, and that's been a subject here for quite a few years now. I think that you should go down to the river bottom, walk around, look around, see what's best for that river bottom. And they also do have a high piece. And I think that that might be more the subdivisible piece, I think it's a hundred and fifty acres, so. I recommend to leave that river bottom floor alone, keep it for farming, green belt, soccer fields, parks. And protect the river along it. And then if you're considering that Riverbank does need to build. I would maybe consider the high part and continue that park ridge on out. And make it a nice subdivision if necessary for the population of Riverbank. Otherwise, I just don't think of river bottoms due to all the the nature of them, I don't think it's good for building on it. It hadn't been good in in the Delta, it hadn't been good in Sacramento. You've all seen that. Very good, thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Canrato, I live on Hoag Road. I'm here also to talk about my opposition to the Riverwalk project. There has been talk of it being dropped as it exists, but it would be a mistake to approve it, in my opinion. However, it's modified. It, this is prime world-class agricultural land, highly productive, they did not need to go into housing or commercial development. The reasons have already been stated many times, they continue to be valid. The the high-class productive land I've mentioned is on a flood plain. The impact on infrastructure, water, sewer, garbage, traffic, lights, et cetera. At the last city, well, I just want to, the levee that blocks the river from flooding is homemade. It was made by a very skilled farmer, but that was many decades ago. And it could be damaged by rabbit, gopher, squirrel holes, tree roots, all of those things, and it hasn't been checked as far as I know. At the last city council meeting, Bill Berryhill mentioned that he was confident the land would not flood. And with all respect to Bill. A couple of years ago, the flooded waters of the Stanislas River were just a few feet from the top of the levee. Had New Maloney's been not been empty, pretty much empty at that time. I'm sure the river would have flooded, even if the river, even if the Maloney's had been partially filled. The river would have flooded, the floodplain would have been underwater. And you can calculate that through good acres of water and, you know, water released. Anyway, thank you for letting me speak, I hope you consider opposing this project very carefully, there's been many complaints and errors in the plan. And 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 for good reason, it should be not approved. Thank you.
Any further public comments? Okay, we'll close public comments, we'll move on to consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar to be acted upon by a single action of the planning commission board unless requested by an individual planning commission member or member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by motion of the planning commission board. And we have item two point one, which is posting of the agenda, the agenda for the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five planning commission meeting was posted on the city community center bulletin board, city hall north and south bulletin boards, post office, city website, and email to the library on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Item two point two, approval of the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five agenda, this provides an opportunity for the planning commission or staff to recommend that an item be placed on the agenda for discussion or to adjust the proposed agenda to allow an item to be taken out of order. Item two point three, approval of the May twenty, two thousand and twenty five planning commission meeting minutes, having been read by the individual commissioners and stands approved as submitted.
I just wanted to add on item two point one on the agenda. The item three point one, or sorry, three point two and three point three, the it's in the correct order, it's just the item numbers are numbered incorrectly, so.
Okay.
So three point three should be three point two and three point two should be three point three.
Okay. Any other amendments? Then entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
Roll call.
Chair Azamora.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart. Commissioner Bosso.
Yes.
And Commissioner Dynan.
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved five oh.
Okay, moving on to the planning commission public hearings, the public notice for items three point one, three point two were published on May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five, for item three point three, it was published June fourth, two thousand and twenty five in the Riverbank News. So we'll start with item three point one, the rezone zero two dash twenty twenty four vesting tentative subdivision map oh two twenty twenty four and architecture and site plan review oh nine dash twenty twenty four Sierra Village.
Good evening Chair, good evening Commissioners, before I start the presentation, I just wanted to make the commission aware that staff did receive one comment letter related to Sierra Village IM three point one. And you all have been provided that comment letter for your review. If you have any questions related to that for discussion, I'd be happy to discuss that with you all. So the project for your consideration this evening is known as Sierra Village, it's located at sixty five oh nine Claus Road. And the application file number is there at the bottom of the screen, rezone investing tentative subdivision map zero two twenty twenty four and architecture and site plan review zero nine twenty twenty four. Excellent, thank you very much. So again, the subject property is located at sixty five oh nine Claus Road, it's further identified by its successor parcel number there. The subject property is just under two acres in size at one point nine four acres. The general plan land use designation of the subject property is medium density residential. And sits within the single family or R one zoning district. So the project before you and for your consideration this evening consists of rezoning the subject property from its current zoning district R one to a new plan development. And the vesting tentative subdivision map to allow that single one point nine four acre parcel to be subdivided into twenty seven single-family residential lots. So here shows the city of Riverbanks general plan map on the left. And then the subject property zoomed in, of course, and identified with that star. As you can see, in the lower left-hand side, that symbol shows that all of the surrounding properties of the subject property are all identified as medium density residential, which carries a density range of eight to sixteen dwelling units per acre. So here's an aerial of the project site. It sits west of Claus Road, it's sandwiched in between Sierra Street and Stanislaw Street. And is just north of Patterson Road, for reference, this planning commission approved, recommended for approval, that heritage two subdivision for reference for location. So some details of the project, the the proposed project would either be would be required to either establish a homeowners association or prepare and provide a joint maintenance agreement prior to the recordation of the final map. Now, the purpose for this, either the HOA or the joint maintenance agreement would establish the responsibility for the long-term maintenance of what's listed there, the project's internal roadways, driveways, sidewalks, landscaping and streetlights. Additionally, that HOA or joint maintenance agreement would be required to maintain the storm drain system, including either a detention, retention or infiltration system as is necessary to accommodate any stormwater results from this or on this site, excuse me. Further, the proposed project would be required to construct off-site improvements. Curbs, gutters, sidewalks, as well as a concrete masonry unit wall along the eastern boundary of the project site, so the frontage along Claus Road. And then additionally, wood fencing would be constructed. So the first entitlement of this project includes that rezone from the existing zoning district of R one to a new plan development. So here we see, as you all are well aware, the the intent of a plan development is to encourage innovative designs. So with that, the project proponent proposes development standards that are unique or specific to this development, excuse me, to this plan development zone. So first column on your far left shows the type of development standards. The middle column shows the current zoning districts, development standards, the R one zone. And then on the far right column, it shows the proposed plan development standards, now the the modified are the standards that deviate from the R one zone or marked or or are, excuse me, denoted with that asterisk. So we'll run through those briefly, so the interior minimum lot size is eighteen hundred square feet. The corner lot size is two thousand one hundred eighty six square feet. And the lot width, the minimum is thirty feet for interior lots, forty feet for corner lots. Here we see the density maximum is one dwelling unit per eighteen hundred square feet. Going down towards the setbacks, you'll notice that the rear yard setback proposed is actually greater than what is required for the R one zone, so essentially doubling the five-yard rear yard setback to ten, ten feet for the rear yard setback. So here we get our first look at the vesting tentative subdivision map, which allows that subdivision of the single parcel. And then a conceptual layout of the proposed project. Included is the architecture and site plan review. Here is, and the applicant is proposing four models, A, B, C and D, these are compact residential units ranging in size from seven eighty six to seven eighty, excuse me, to nine hundred and twenty square feet. On the right side, you see the the layout, the floor plan. And here, model A is is composed of two bedrooms, one bath. Model B is comprised of two bedrooms and two baths, and this is the largest of the four units that are proposed. Excuse me. And then model C is eight hundred and fifty two square feet, it's a two-bedroom, one-bath. And then lastly is model D. Which is seven hundred eighty square feet, two bedrooms, one bath. Here we'll see the proposed landscaping plan. As you'll note, on the left side, the landscaping plan that was originally provided has been has since been modified, the applicant has worked with staff and has agreed to actually double the park space, so instead of one lot, they've doubled it and now there's two lots, so you'll see on the right side that that park space, the common area, common park area is actually the the size of what are two lots, essentially. So for some general plan consistency, policy land two point four. The city encourages reuse of vacant and underutilized land in the infill opportunity area. And this subject, this the subject property is actually located within that infill opportunity area. And I'll just make a note on that. That infill area or infill opportunity area per the city's adopted general plan says that this opportunity area will consist or mostly consists of apartments, condos, townhouses, small lots, single-family structures and other compact residential units, units, excuse me, so you'll notice that this project is consistent with that infill opportunity area. Additionally, the project's consistent with land policy three point three. The city will encourage compact development, which places an origination and destination points closer together, so residences are close to stores and schools, allowing for alternatives to vehicular travel. The proposed project is located within walking distance to Riverbank High School, the Market Village and other eateries and convenience. And also some some bus stops in the area of Patterson and Eighth Street as well. The project was properly noticed for the public hearing this evening. It was published in the Riverbank News, as well as notices were mailed to properties within three hundred feet of the project site. The project, the proposed project is categorically exempt from further environmental analysis pursuant to secret guidelines for the section two one one five nine point two one, which is the exemption for qualified housing projects. Staff's recommendation, there are three resolutions. So staff is recommending the following actions, adopt resolution twenty five zero zero six, which which would be a recommendation to city council to approve the the rezone of the subject property from the single-family residential R one zone to a new plan development. The second is, these are all recommendations to the city council for the approval of the vesting tentative subdivision map, which would allow that subdividing of the single one point nine four acre parcel into the twenty seven single-family residential lots. And then finally recommend to council the approval of the architecture and site plan review. That concludes staff's presentation, and I believe the applicant representative is here and would like to make some comments. If that is okay.
I did have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
In the original paperwork, it mentioned in lieu fee for parks, is that fee no longer going to be collected because of the expansion of the park area?
No, staff, excuse me, the project would still be subject to pay in lieu fees for the for the park.
Okay, and these particular units are going to be market rate units?
Yes, sir.
So there's not going to be any deed restrictions, so you can't avoid investors coming in, buying all the lots and making them all rentals?
No, they're they're all market rate for sale, individual residential units.
Okay, and then regarding the HOA or the joint maintenance agreement, when will that be decided and who decides that?
Yeah, so that will be required prior to the final map recordation of that, so the vesting tentative subdivision map will be approved by council. And then either the developer will have to make the improvements, you know, the offsite improvements, curb gutter sidewalk or bond for those improvements, and then and then, excuse me, and then the the HOA or the joint maintenance agreement will have to be established and provided to staff prior to the recordation of the final map. So that would all be spelled out prior to the approval before they can build residential units, so that either the HOA for the maintenance of that internal lot and the internal constructed, you know, curb gutter sidewalks, streetlights, et cetera. That would all have to be sorted out, subject to review by the city attorney, city engineer, community development director before they would be issued a building permit.
Is there one direction or other that staff recommends the the builder or the project to take? Because sometimes I think an HOA would probably be more attentive to the maintenance than than the other agreement. I didn't know if there was one preference or the other.
So the project hasn't been conditioned to do one or the other, but I I don't know if Josh could speak on that.
Sure, Chair Zamora, so the the intent of the condition is that the applicant either provide the HOA or some similar instrument so that the the common maintenance can be, you know, shared amongst the the future property owners. I don't know that the city necessarily has a preference as to one entity or the other. It's just commonly, that's that's the instruments we see through a homeowners association or some type of shared maintenance agreement between all the property owners.
Okay. Those are all my questions.
Thank you.
My other question is, is the developer here?
The applicant representative and property owner?
Yes, sir. I I applaud the fact that you're building smaller homes, two-bedroom, one bath, two-bedroom, two-bath. What was your thinking in providing this type of a unit instead of a four-bedroom, two-story, six thousand square foot house?
The developer, the applicant representative have also have also have a presentation for you, Commissioners.
Let's hope, should we open the public hearing first and then do that after? Let's do that.
Okay, let's open up the public comments on this particular item, are there any public comments? Yes. Yes.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Mary Cruz Saldivar. And I live right behind this proposed project. So me and my husband, Elorla Moyal. So me and my husband, Elorla Moya, live directly behind the proposed Sierra Village development. Both of us have lived in Riverbank our whole lives, and we have now made this choice to raise our children here. This neighborhood means a lot to us. It's where we built our home, our family, and our future. That's why we're deeply concerned about this project. The proposal to place twenty-seven homes on oddly shaped one point nine four acre lot. Would, this would severely impact our family's privacy, safety, and quality of life. The planned homes will be extremely close to our backyard with little to no buffer. As we saw, the houses are lined up right up to our fence. Something else that was just brought up, the, what if it is bought and it's all rented out and people consistently in and out? So there's no consistency there for the people that are living, if it's going to be rented out, move in and out constantly. We are very concerned about traffic as well. It is near Highway one oh eight, Riverbank High School, both of which already cause congestion and safety issues. Adding, adding dozens of homes and vehicles to this narrow space will only make it worse. There's also drainage and flooding risks, a lack of emergency access, and no green space or public benefit. This project simply does not fit in our neighborhood. Please listen to those of us who are directly impacted. We respectfully ask you tonight this rezoning request. Thank you.
Any other public comments regarding this matter? Okay, we'll close public comments and we'll move forward with the applicant's presentation.
The public hearing still hoping for our comments or?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, I guess, first of all, I want to thank staff for all their hard work in this project. It's taken us probably close to a year or more to get to this point, so we appreciate it and we thankful for being here. I'm Rick Mumert with Benchmark Engineering, Modesto, representing Kerry Hahn and Gary Lev. Gary's with us tonight. Gary and Kerry are really, they're Forteas custom homes. They brought the custom home feel to this small, smaller homes because it's a way for them to give back. They, they have been very successful in their, in their home building career and a way to give back and also provide a much-needed housing opportunity. We've read all the conditions, we agreed to the conditions, so I think we can set the conditions aside. One of the things I wanted to mention, so the young lady that just spoke, is that the water and sewer and storm drain system is, well, water and sewer is public. Going through there, we're going to have easements through there. So each house will have a city water service and a city sewer service. They will get their individual bills for their, for their lots. So the letter that was just brought up yesterday, staff provided an opposition letter from, from the neighbors. And Mary Cruz Saldivar and Eduardo Moya, I appreciate you coming in. I appreciate your letter, but I just wanted to clarify a few things and address some of their concerns, okay? So if you have your letter, their letter in front of you, her letter in front of you, they talk about their key concerns, loss of privacy and overcrowding. When she mentioned about the houses being right behind her home, right, that's accurate. Staff presented the minimum setback of being five feet. We're proposing ten feet, which is five, it's double the minimum, right? I also want to make note that Ms. Saldivar's house is seventy feet from the property line. She, she's on roughly seventy feet from the property line of those houses that back up to her. You know, her, her house fronts on Sierra, and it's quite a large backyard. And then she talked about the second-story windows directly facing into the backyard. You saw the beautiful renderings, they're all single-story, none of them exceed twenty feet height. So there's no one looking in, in her backyard. She talks about the increased traffic, the proposed project, off-street parking with no driveways backing on the claws, backing on Sierra, backing on Stanislaus. They're all internal parking, except for on Stanislaus Street. Those houses actually front, but they park behind. They could park on the street also, that, there's that additional parking, well, I'll call off-street parking, right? And then she talked about the drainage risk and the lots drain away from the property lines. We can never drain on somebody else's property. And this is actually going to help potentially at the drainage system, especially in Stanislaus, because that's a pretty brutal street. The county was supposed to fix it up and they never did because the north side of the street's, you know, a county island. And so the county saying, no, the whole street's in the city, so we got to put in the new street on, on Stanislaus Street. So they drain away from it into the parking area, captured into a trench drain system, which will be onsite and privately maintained. They talked, she talked about the two points of access, that two-point, two points of access, which we have, one on Stanislaus and one on Sierra, is a typical access for emergency vehicles. They, even in apartment complexes, you have to have a secondary point of access, which we, we have those two points. And all the fire truck turning radiuses have been accounted for on our, on our project. And compatibility with neighborhood character. I think Michael mentioned it well, where the general plan has this opportunity area, right? And this is exactly what that general plan was calling out for. The general plan's medium-density residential, rather than the single-family residential chart, we saw that side-by-side comparison. Well, we don't have to, it's, it's more in line with the medium-density requirements rather than that. So eight to sixteen dwelling units per acre, so we could have had up to thirty-two. Could we fit thirty-two? Probably not without going multi-story, or it just didn't fit into developers' goals there. The park that we proposed, it was staff's recommendation that we, we double that park. You know, we got some solar, we got picnic shelters, it's going to be a really nice park, but it's for the residents of the community, of the private community, not public. And she was right in saying that, but we still, we still provide parkland and we're paying the in-lug fee for the park that's required by this project. The, all the parking is contained on the site and it's got internal circulation sidewalks. We didn't, we didn't cut out sidewalks just because we're in private. We have the sidewalks in there, so I, I think it's going to be a, a great project, you know? And, and you, you look at the architecture and the, the color renderings that we're up there, that you can see that it's, it's going to be a higher-end, small house, project on small lots. This is, Sierra Village is not a project for the unhoused. It's not an affordable project. It is market rate. Don't know, costs are changing, you know, daily, weekly, monthly, costs have risen. We originally thought we were going to be in the three fifty range. Now we're hoping to keep it as below four hundred for sure, but we got to look at those costs when they come up. And all, all across the board, vertical construction, site construction, it's all, it's all really increased. But we want to give, Gary wants to give an opportunity for seniors, young professionals, single parents with children, or a young couple starting out, an opportunity to own their own home. I just asked Kerry when the, when it came up, is, his goal is to sell it to, to non-investors, right? But when things say slow down or not selling or something like that, he can't rule that either, but it's not the intent or the goal to, to do that. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have, the best I can. Thank you.
Chair, may I ask another question?
Yeah.
Would you explain the more depth, the parking situation for this project?
Sure.
I don't see any garages on these houses.
Yeah, there's no garages. It would be, it would be similar to an apartment complex, where you go in there and you have your assigned stalls for your, your particular unit, and it's two spaces per house, which even in apartments, probably one and a half spaces for. So we got the, the parking enough for every unit, two stalls for every unit, plus we have the street on Stanislaus to park on.
Thank you.
In terms of, once they're built and you're selling them, is there any plan to partner with a lender? They might be able to offer, or the, the builder offer incentives to first-time home buyers? Those of the population, anything like that?
Oh, a later item on three point three, Kerry Pope and I have had those conversations. And, and, and Gary's also is, maybe there's some opportunities out there with the city has some programs, or if there might be other programs available to first home buyers, first-time home buyers, that we definitely want to seek any of that help. And hopefully interest rates go down a little bit and make the house payment go down a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. I know that you mentioned fencing, so would each of these homes be fenced with their own private lot?
That's a great question. So what we're proposing tonight, I don't know if you, you saw it, in, in, in the tiny home ordinance, the setbacks are four feet. We're proposing three feet. So we don't have a fence between the units to give the fire department six feet to be able to, say, in an emergency situation, either a fire or emergency situation, be able to get down to the site. But in the back of the lot, the houses at the rear of the house will have a fence with gates to go into the rear yard. And then they have that ten-foot by thirty-foot backyard that will be fenced off. So we'll have new perimeter fencing, we have walls along claws and, and Sierra. No, not Sierra, no, we don't, just claws.
Houses would not have private yards.
They do have private yards in the backyard. It's still their lot. Like, maybe your front lot, front yard of your house is not fenced, but it's private property, right? These lots will be owned, I don't know where we can get that map up, but yeah, they'll, these are, they, they own the house and the, thank you, Michael. They own the house and the lot.
That there'd be a, a safe place for a child to play and a dog to play, right?
Yeah, so, let's see, maybe, or do you have the development plan exhibit by any chance? Oh, yeah. So where the houses are placed on, yeah, see, see the backyards right there, all those backyards along the wall, backyards. Oh, okay. Is this it? Oh. Oh, whoa. Michelle will attest that I am technically uninclined or not capable. So all these backyards here, these will be fenced between here, so the little fence right here. This is all backyard for, for their, and then all along here. And all along here and here, they all have backyard. Now, these have front yards that face, these houses face Stanislaus Street, but they do have backyards also adjacent to the parking stalls. And here's all the parking stalls. And we just didn't make it one giant parking lot. We have landscaping, little landscape islands in between there. This park is all landscaped, it's got barbecues and so forth, it's being proposed. Hopefully this becomes like a signature project for the city and we can do that in a couple of other little infill areas. But I hope it really works out if it gets approved.
All of the exterior landscaping would be under the control of the HOA, right?
All this, yes, all this common area landscaping, parking lot, drainage, sight lighting that's in the parking areas would all, and this park would all be a, a part of the HOA or the maintenance agreement. We're probably going to lean towards the HOA so the HOA could actually own the common area lot versus our client keeping it, you know, in perpetuity. So I, I think that might be the better way to go, to answer your question.
Any other questions? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, ready for vote. I need, oh, we need to entertain a motion approving item three point one. Oh, yeah, we'll close the, the pub, public hearing. Now we can move forward for a motion.
I move we approve item three point one, the rezone of O two dash two zero two four, subdivision map zero two dash two zero two four, in architecture and site plan review zero nine dash two zero two four, department file two four.
Excuse me, Karen, you wanted to speak again? Yeah, we can reopen public comment. All right.
My name is Karen Conrato, and the only comment that I would like to make would be that the, these are low, not low-income homes, but they're small homes and starter homes. And you're talking about an HOA or a joint maintenance program, but that takes away the cost of the city, for the city being responsible for all of those. But these are, that means that these people are going to be responsible for all of the streetlights and the sidewalks and the maintenance. And that will only, that cost will only increase over time. So I think that that should be brought into consideration. I just think the city should be responsible for that, not these young or older, you know, less able financially to be able to have that additional cost of an HOA. And that was the main, my main point, really. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay, we'll close public comments.
I'd like to respond to that public comment, if that's okay. I hear what you said. I lived in a condominium complex for twenty years in San Jose, and there always have homeowners associations and are in fact responsible for lamps, paving, roofing, the whole nine yards. And I, I think this is very similar to a condominium complex, except that they're individual homes, which is great. I, I would strongly support an HOA.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll entertain that motion once again.
I move approval of item three point one, rezon zero two dash two zero two four, vesting tentative subdivision map zero two dash two zero two four, in architecture and site plan review zero nine dash two zero two four, Sierra Village.
Hi, I will second.
Okay, roll call.
Chair Zamora?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Bosso?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dinan?
Yes.
It passes five oh.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is listed as item three point three, but is actually three point two, the contingent, conditional use permit number O three dash twenty twenty-five regarding El Gusto Cucina Italiana.
Thank you, Chair. So the application before you this evening is for El Gusto Restaurant, an existing restaurant that's located within the downtown specific plan at thirty-five twenty-five Atchison Street. That, sorry about that, the conditional use permit number zero three twenty twenty-five. So for some background, again, it's located along Atchison Street within the downtown, downtown specific plan. Has a general plan land use designation of mixed use. The corresponding zoning district within the city of Riverbank is neighborhood commercial, but because the, it's within the downtown specific plan that supersedes the zoning ordinance with respect to the neighborhood commercial. So the downtown specific plan designation is Highway Boulevard. So this proposed project is sort of twofold. The conditional use permit is to allow first, the conversion of the existing commercial building into a banquet hall with overflow capacity in conjunction with the existing restaurant down the street. That's also sits on Atchison Street. And then the second component is to allow the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption. Now, the type of license that will be pursued by the applicant is to be determined with ABC application. So here we have an image of the project site along Atchison Street as well as State Route one oh eight. It's sandwiched between existing commercial as well as the existing restaurant, excuse me. Here's a photo of the actual downtown specific plan with the corresponding zoning districts within the downtown zone. Again, the project site is marked with the star. Now, the Highway Boulevard Zone encourages development that supports retail shops, catering services, eating establishments, and other similar uses along the Highway Boulevard Zone. So the first part, here's the site plan. The site plan and the floor plan, the architecture, as we'll see, is really not being modified so much, but the scale, the scale is smaller. The floor plan improvements, as you'll see, is, is small, but to accommodate the overflow capacity and the banquet uses. So this is just to illustrate what is existing at the, at the site presently. So here's the, the floor plan that you can see the scale is really small, so it's not going to be a banquet hall that serves hundreds of people at this site or a large group. Again, it's just to serve overflow capacity from the existing restaurant. One point, however, is the, the improvements that will be made are to accommodate the ADA requirements. So there are three. One point, however, is the the improvements that will be made are to accommodate the ADA requirements. So there are three um doors that have been improved by six inches, thirty six inches to forty two inches wide to accommodate the in- entrance and exit of uh patrons. So again, this is just to illustrate the existing conditions. Um, any any signage that is proposed will require a additional review by staff and approval by staff. Now, the second component of the proposed project, the conditional use permit, the city zoning ordinance and municipal code require a conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages, whether it's for onsite or offsite consumption. So staff has, um, excuse me, I'll I'll go through uh these three bullet points. Um, El Gusto again is an existing restaurant that wants to continue doing business in the city. The wishes to enhance the convenience and experience for their patrons. And then additionally, they would like to compete with the surrounding businesses within the downtown specific plan. Um, staff has reviewed the applicant's request for a conditional use permit and has determined that the required findings uh have been met and is ultimately, staff's ultimately recommending approval for this conditional use permit. This project is exempt from uh CECL review uh based off of the section one five three zero one uh CECL guidelines, which is existing facilities. Uh, so finally, staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution number twenty five zero one two for finding the project categorically exempt under that CECL exemption, one five three zero one, and approve the conditional use permit zero three twenty twenty five for uh the El Gusto expansion. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
For this particular site, they just want it to be an extension of their current facility. So as an overflow seating for dinner, patrons, that kind of thing?
Essentially, yes, and then to allow um other patrons to potentially rent the space um for uses similar, but also for the overflow capacity. It would just be a another use. For example, if they want to rent it, but also have food served from the restaurant, they could do that. So just think of, you know, private rooms that are, you know, um ma- reservations are made at restaurants that have the space, but El Gusto doesn't have the actual space at their existing restaurants. So essentially, yes.
You know what the seating capacity is going to be?
Um, I I do not, but I could get that from the applicant, yes sir.
There's more, I I could chime in on that. So I believe the proposal would be up to thirty patrons or um eating there plus staff. The staff, I think, is a handful of staff, so. Um, ultimately, it's going to be determined based on the building code, fire code, uh and those type of things.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Then we'll open it up for public comment. Do you have any public comments regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comments and we'll take roll call. Oh, we do need a motion. Thank you. I make a motion that we accept item three point two, conditional use permit number O three dash twenty twenty five. Okay, now we're ready to go.
Okay, uh Chair Zamora?
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Abasso?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dinen?
Yes.
I think the profit, it's approved five oh.
Excellent. Moving on to the final item here, um which is listed as three point two, which is three point three, which is the rezone, item zero one dash twenty twenty five, vesting tentative subdivision map, zero one dash twenty twenty five, and architecture and site plan review, zero four dash twenty twenty five, the Meadowview subdivision.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. Again, this, the proposed project before you this evening is um known as Meadowview. Meadowview subdivision, excuse me, uh the entitlements requested for this application are similar to three point one, so requesting a rezone to plan development, uh vesting tentative subdivision map to allow the subdivision of the subject parcel and then architecture and site plan review. So for some background, the project site is located uh at forty five thirty seven California, excuse me, it's identified by its accessory parcel number, and the project site is five point eight three acres in size. Uh, the general plan land use designation is uh medium density residential, and it sits within the single family residential zoning district. Now, this project, again, it consists of a rezoning, the subject property to a new plan development, and then to allow the subdivision of the single five point eight three acre parcel into this time thirty one residential units, residential lots, excuse me. So here we see the the aerial of the project site. Um, it sits at the northwestern corner or corner of the intersection of Snedeker Road and California Street. Um, just west of the project site is Bruin Heights, which is a similar subdivision in kind in architecture. So this proposed project would, prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy, it would be required to um do the num- number of things listed here. So it would be required to improve the intersection at California Avenue, California Street, excuse me, and Snedeker Road um eh to, excuse me, by installing a four way stop sign. They would pay, they would be required to play, pay all applicable system development fees with uh system development fees. Uh, traffic impact portion of those SDFs will serve as the project's fair share uh contribution toward the planned signalization of the intersection at Snedeker Road and Patterson Road, so just north of the project site. The proposed project would also be required to construct um offsite improvements, including curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and wood fencing between the residential lots. So similar to the first application before you this evening, it's a rezon to the planned development. So similarly, they proposed uh development standards for this planned development zone. And again, the the modified or the deviations from that R one zoning district are marked with an asterisk. So we see that for interior, um interior lots, the minimum lot size is forty five hundred square feet and five thousand square feet for interior lots. Now, that minimum lot size of forty five hundred square feet applies to less than half of the lots that make up the subdivision, whereas the remaining lots uh are between five thousand um and ten thousand square feet. The density um is consistent with the general plan land use designation of medium density residential, which is that range of eight to sixteen dwelling units per acre. The proposed rear lot and the side, excuse me, the rear yard setback and the side yard setback for corner lots are double the um development standards for the R one zoning district. So here we have uh our first look at the vesting tentative subdivision map for the proposed project. And we'll see here a closer look of the prod- the proposed project. Uh, so here we see the the largest lot. There's an existing dwelling on Lot thirty one. That green lot would serve as the park basin, dual use basin to manage stormwater. Um, and circled in red um is also a requirement if propose, if the proposed project is approved, that would require um roadway dedication to the city. So essentially, on California Avenue, as I showed previously, the Bruin Heights subdivision located to the west, um this dedication would essentially line up this subdivision. So see the curb, gutter, and sidewalk would be, you know, connect and then extend that pedestrian walkway. And then also expand the width of the right of way along um California Avenue and Snedeker. So with this project, the applicant, so mind you, it's thirty one lots in sum, but the applicant uh with this architecture and site plan review has proposed um eight different models with three elevations. So think of twenty four options for a total of thirty one units, or essentially. So here we get our first look. Um, and then this is just a sample I've provided for the total packages within the uh the agenda and staff report as attachments. So here's the violet, that's the smallest of the options. It's just under fifteen hundred square feet with a three bedroom, two bath home. All units have a two car garage. The uh the iris is a bit bigger at seventeen hundred seventy square feet. We see the three elevations provided by the applicant here. They all have the combination of a a great room and kitchen. Here's the rose, which is, I believe, the, it is the largest of the offerings out of the eight models at two thousand one hundred eighteen square feet. It offers a four bed, three bath combination, again, two car garage. Here is the sunflower, four bed, two and a half bath combination, two car garage. And again, this is just a sample of the eight um offerings in sum. So this this project is consistent with the city's general plan. This uh here is the design four point two, which says that approved projects and subdivision subdivisions, excuse me, shall provide diversity among dwelling units and use of color, building materials, et cetera. And so for the thirty one lots, twenty four, essentially twenty four options are made available. So there's a variety, of course. And then finally, um the general plan policy design three point two, approved plan, approved plans, excuse me, projects and subdivision requests shall provide residential site and building design that contributes to an attractive pedestrian friendly environment. Um, again, this entitlement request includes the architecture and site plan review. Um, so it's consistent with those requirements, and then similarly, the sidewalks will be installed as a condition of approval, and then connect this new subdivision with the existing Bruin Heights to the west. This project, similarly to item three point one, is uh exempt from CECL review pursuant to uh CECL guideline section listed there, an exemption for qualified housing projects. As a requirement, a city requirement, a legal requirement, this um because it's it's such a wide uh California and Snedeker, we asked the applicant to post two notices in case passerbyers, you know, are on Snedeker or California, we he, the applicant was agreeable to post two development application notices here, as you see pictured here. So um staff is recommending the following actions, the adoption of uh the three resolutions here. And again, that these are recommendations ultimately to city council. So if uh the commission has questions, I'd be happy to help. Thank you.
Any questions, commissioners?
Can you put back to the site map, babe?
Yeah, absolutely.
All homes, are those? Which maps are the all the small homes? I know that we have a variety of lot sizes, so are they just mixed in with all the other lots, or are they all a block of the small lots?
Um, well, th- the lot sizes range from forty five hundred square feet up to ten thousand square feet, and the smallest um the smallest home per dwelling unit proposed is so bear with me, is one thousand four hundred sixty six square feet. So none of these are uh necessarily uh small or compact by design.
Lot sizes are all dispersed completely throughout through the, looking at this, it looks like all the, from twenty four to thirty are all the small lots. And then the larger lots are like around the perimeter? Is that, is that just?
Uh, they're largely uniform. Um, the the small lots say two, three, four, twenty four through thirty. And let's see if I can see, they don't have the sizes on um. Yes, sir. That's correct, yeah. So in the staff report and attachments, it has the the development plan, which lists um the square footage is for each lot. Yes, ma'am, I apologize.
And are the, is there a floor plan assigned to each lot already?
I believe so. Development plan for the lots are included, yes, sir.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, then we'll open up for public comment.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Mary Alpers. I live at sixty two hundred Snedeker Road. I'm very, very pleased to see under project details that you're going to improve the intersection there at California and Snedeker. I've I've lived in my property for fifty three years, and that intersection has been dangerous, becomes more dangerous constantly. And I hope that you you do complete this. Um, the north side of Snedeker from California up to Patterson is a city, and south of that belongs to the county. So I hope that's not a problem to to make that a four way stop. But it's it's very satisfying to see that you, it's going to be required one way or another. So thank you for this. With all the subdivisions there, there are so many pedestrians taking advantage of the the nice walking and biking activities that desperately need that four way stop. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Norma Menriquez, and I am also a neighbor. I do have two things to request. I know we're looking at the rezoning right now. But we have a really nice community out there, these brand new houses with their zero scape landscaping that doesn't look that nice. So when it comes back to you, I don't know about the zero scape landscaping, because all we have is that bark all over the sidewalks. They go at, the bark goes in the gutters in the wintertime. And it it looks like it's difficult upkeep because a lot of the neighbors just have weeds. So it's a beautiful neighborhood, but these these zero scape landscaping is really not not making them shine. And then the other comment is, just because I've gone through this, is the underground um electricity and the underground uh infrastructure that goes in. Yet electricity especially, because for those of us who have been there for a while, we have these big electrical poles. And what happens is n- the developer will say, yeah, we'll we'll take it underground, but the neighbor next to them gets those poles. So um instead of just, you know, taking theirs under, they move those poles to the neighbor next to them. So that's just um as a heads up probably to the neighbors. But other than that, I mean, beautiful community, so I hope it comes in.
Good evening, uh Chairman and members of the of the commission. Um, Kerry Pope, I'm the applicant. Um, lived in Riverbank thirty eight years, um just about three blocks that way, so nice and close to y'all. Um, be happy to answer any questions. Um, uh, you know, oftentimes with the landscaping and 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 a lot of the electrical systems were uh were were mandated to to be able to underground everything that's that's within um, you know, our project um boundaries. And um, you know, we certainly don't want to impact anybody, uh you know, any of the neighbors around us. Oftentimes, it's not any of our decision. It's PG and E's and and others that that will uh require some of these things, but regarding some of the landscaping, not, Norma, not my first choice as well. Um, you know, frankly, I like grass, you know, but we're not allowed to to do that anymore because of the water situation, but um I do hear you and will uh take that into consideration as well. Uh, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have of me.
Yes, John.
Uh, curiosity question either for yourself or staff. Mary wants a four way stop sign in in the beginning for that intersection. Part of it is county, part of it is city. Is that a real hassle to deal with?
Uh, that's a great question, Commissioner Dinen. Um, that's something that we looked at with the city engineer in terms of if the geometry would work. And and basically, what what the improvements are going to look like are striping and a sign. So um city engineer is pretty confident that we could make it work um in terms of the available space on the unincorporated county side. On the city side, it won't be an issue. But there is the um the two sides that that come into the unincorporated area that we looked at. But there is the, the two sides that, that come into the unincorporated area that we looked at.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go with the Zoom comment. Okay, Thomas, you can go ahead. Okay. Okay, Thomas, you're, we can hear you now.
God is so good.
I don't know.
I agree with the last comment. You know, God is good. So it's great.
Let's come. Okay. Any other public comments? I know the young lady was going to.
What, one other thing, I just wanted to commend staff, Josh and others. You guys have a great staff here and we, I really enjoy working with, with them and they've been a great help for us. So I want to commend them as well. So thank you.
Okay.
Thomas, are you there? No, just a prank.
He is fucking some. We'll keep trying.
Hi, my name's Stacy. I live on Snedeker and like Mary, that intersection is horrible. So if a four-way stop is great, I do have concern with the increased traffic coming down Snedeker in California. Happy to see some of the road improvements, especially on Patterson there by the high school. But it is detouring down Snedeker. So we're seeing that a lot increased traffic. And Snedeker is like being held up by duct tape as it is with the patches of holes and stuff. So hopefully that's factored in somehow. But that would be my biggest concern. I'm hoping, I'm sorry, that not.
Vesting 1, 2, 3.
Because I like my little country, but yet, you know, life with a little bit of being close to the city. But increased traffic would be my main concern. And but yes, that, that has to be a four-way stop if we're going to increase the traffic as it is with the detour. And then coming down from Eleanor and down California and Snedeker. Every day, you take your life into your own hands and hoping that people are going to stop because it's hard to see sometimes around those corners. So the increase in traffic, but, and I wish we could do something about the landscaping. Yes, they're beautiful developments. But if you walk through them, they're hard to look at with the increased weeds and whatnot. So that's my two cents.
Okay.
Did we get that working?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my name's Tom Owens. I'm a civil engineer and a land surveyor and I'm testing for my architect's license and in the middle of it. I've got a couple of concerns. One is the density as you approach the agricultural areas. Generally, you want to try and increase the density rather than decrease the density. California Avenue is, since Bruin Heights got built, has been seeing a lot of traffic. In fact, a lot of construction traffic and it's really trashed the road. Snedeker is already in terrible shape all the way from California to Patterson. And I don't know if it can handle that extra traffic. I think a better design would be to loop that road around on the inside, put the storm drain basin up on the northeast corner and keep all the traffic into California since it's all improved all the way out. And that's about all I got on my notes.
Okay, thank you. Karen, you have a comment?
Karen Corrado, I just had a comment about the zero landscape and I'm concerned about that as well. Anytime you have, especially in this California heat, Modesto, Riverbank heat, you know, shade trees and shrubs are pretty vital for for a family backyard, you know, you need shade. And that helps gather families together. It helps make a community. So I would like you guys to consider a little more room for landscaping, for trees and, and grass maybe, or some, some sort of shade to reduce that so people can enjoy their backyards. Thank you.
Do we have any more public comments regarding this item? Okay, we'll close public comment on this item. Entertain a motion on this item.
I'm of approval of item 3.1, what is this, 3.3? 3.3 rezone 01-2025, vesting tentative subdivision map 01-2025, and architecture and site plan review 04-2025 Meadowview.
Hey, roll call.
Chair Zamora?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart? Commissioner Abasso?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dinen?
Yes.
The project's approved 5-0.
Okay, we'll move on to item four. Any planning commission comments from any of the commissioners?
Yes, I have one. I don't know, I don't know if the planning commission knew anything about this. But I have noticed almost every single neighborhood in Riverbank has a very large number of lawns that are dead, dying, or covered with tall weeds. And I know that this is a personal choice, but it also has an effect on the neighbors. It, it will bring insects. Some of them are actually a fire hazard. And I know that it is definitely going to start affecting property values. So anything that we can do to convince people, if, if they're going to let their lawn go dead, at least mow it to keep it looking halfway decent. That's my comment.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Okay, then we'll move on to item number five. Can I report any correspondence?
Good evening. We do not have any correspondence at this meeting.
Okay, then we'll move on to you, Josh. Any staff comments, item number six?
Sure. I just had a couple of items I wanted to highlight. As I think you all are aware, we have a Riverwalk workshop July 9th. So hopefully you can all attend. This will be a joint planning commission city council event where we get to hear a lot of information about the project. Other than that, I just wanted to mention next month, we'll, we have so far one project scheduled for the planning commission agenda. That's an apartment project on Morel in between Jackson and Howard. So I'm not sure if we have any other projects lined up. For sure, we'll have that one next month. That's all the comments I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we move on to item number eight, which is adjourning. So this meeting is now adjourned. Yes.